Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our November 21st Council Workshop. We've got a couple of items on the agenda this morning. The Rental Code Amendments and Odor Control. Mr. Manager, any couple of comments before we get going?
No, I just asked Sue Ann for both topics.
Morning, Mayor and Council. We're going to start with the Rental Code Amendment. So, the Rental Code is contained in Chapter 60. We last adopted the Iowa Property Maintenance Code 2015. That was our last major update. When we did that, we moved text directly from the IPMC over to Chapter 60 for clarity. That means that people don't have to actually go by the IPMC. It's contained in our code, so it makes it easier and clearer for enforcement purposes. We also struck portions of the IPMC that are not needed or conflict with our operating procedure. We are now adopting the 2021 IPMC. We are going to strike conflicting provisions from the adopted international code, bring forward text regarding occupancy limitations. We're doing that because in zoning and some other codes within the municipal code, we refer to the occupancy limits for some of our calculations. And so, to make it clear, we wanted to move those directly over so people could find them easier. We want to amend the violations.
We're bringing them forward, but we're not changing them?
We're not changing them. And then, we're going to amend the violations for public nuisance structures to make them easier to understand, and I'll show you an example later, and then make some non-substantive code amendments that are typographical, spelling, and that type of thing. So, the provisions that we're striking, Code Compliance Agency. We appoint the Code Compliance through Chapter 60 as the Neighborhood Services Neighborhood Inspection Division, so we don't need their Code Compliance Agency language. Means of Appeal, theirs is slightly different. Ours goes to Housing Appeals Board, and it's set out in Chapter 60 specifically, so we don't want any conflict between the Means of Appeal. Again, Board of Appeals is slightly different in the property international code than it is ours. Ours is set out in Chapter 60. Method of Service is slightly different. Transfer of Ownership, they have in the international code, says that you can't sell a house that's under violation until it's brought up to code. That violates state law, so we need to take that out. Placarding is slightly differently, although we do have a placarding of unsafe and dangerous structures set out in our code to make it clear we're using our code, not the international code. Demolition process is different, so we're striking that. Handrails and guardrails are different in the international code. We brought it over from the building code, so it complies with, our building code now complies with the rental code, so not in conflict internally. And then, fire protection systems are actually inspected by our fire department, so we don't want it in our code that we have any responsibility when it's the fire department. Again, occupancy limits, we use it for rental, but other occupancy limits for zoning. We had a portion of the international code provisions in our Chapter 60. Others were by reference, we're moving them over so that actually people can find them within our code. Public nuisance violation, the current code does contain language from the International Property Maintenance Code, but it was very confusing, so we wanted to amend it so it's easier. For instance, this paragraph is what's currently in our code. It says it's dangerous to health, life, health, property, not providing minimum safeguards to protect or warn in event of fire, unsafe equipment, decayed, dilapidated, structurally unsafe, and collapsing foundation. That's very hard for both code officials to cite to that particular paragraph, and it's very difficult for people who are receiving the notice to know what it is in that paragraph that they're supposed to be repairing. It's equally as difficult for them to take that notice to PDC and say, "I need a permit to repair, you know, this." So, we're breaking it down into separate citations. Fire safety will be a citation, unsafe equipment would be a citation, structurally unsafe, unstable foundation. So, we'll break them out, so it's easier for us to cite them and easier for people to understand what we're asking them to do.
How long will we let a structure sit like that to rental property?
This is for the public nuisance structure itself.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so, I mean...
So, yeah, rental properties can fall under a public nuisance, and then it would shift over to the public nuisance process.
Right, okay, so how long are we going to let a building that's, or a home that's got on fire be boarded up and sit and not have any activity?
We do the notices, we serve the notices, we take it to council, and we go to the court system, and then we're at the mercy of the court system to get the decree. I say 18 months is probably a pretty safe guess to get all the way through the system before we can actually do a demolition.
How long before you bring it to us? How long is it?
It's 30 to 60 days after we get everybody served. We have to find everybody that has legal interests and personally serve them, have somebody hand them a piece of paper, so it can be sometimes dicey to find people out of state or, you know, corporation.
The way this has been working, it means we just cite the entire paragraph.
Yes, and then we put a note that what applies to it, like this is a faulty foundation. We put a note, but people get lost in the paragraph, and it, and they have to pick out, the inspector has to pick out, "Okay, which one of those am I going to choose?"
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I have trouble when I, they're on our agenda, and I try and read them, I try and understand what's going on. I have trouble figuring out just, I'm skimming, but it's not easy to...
It's not easy.
It's not easy to figure out, and we have even more specificity there if we identify, for example, a southeast wall in a house is what is the issue.
Yeah, but that's what we're working toward. The foundation southeast is collapsing, so it's all in one space. What they're trying to do is cite all the violations and then put all the compliance in a long list. Well, that's hard for everybody to figure out in that long list which section of the code it's referring back to. So, the idea is to have a shorter paragraph, foundation collapsing, and then underneath that put the northeast corner, the foundation is collapsing. So, that's the goal, that's what we're trying to get to.
Specifically direct is wrong.
Yep, yep.
Pursuant, so this is public notice. It could be buildings, it could be houses, it could be rental.
This is any, any structure in the city that's deemed to be a public nuisance.
Okay, and, but you inspectors don't go inside unless it's a rental, do they?
They go into open structures to determine if they're a nuisance.
If it's open, meaning it's had a fire, they walk into it?
Or the door's open, somebody's busted in a door. If we can't get in, we have to go get a search warrant, which we can do. If we have reason to believe that there's something that's wrong inside, that's a life and safety issue, we can take it to a judge and say, "This is the reason we believe, and we needed access to determine whether that is in there or not."
And how would an inspector know? Like when you talk about a foundation, are you talking about just a bowed wall in a foundation? I mean, what, what deems the inspectors experts that they can say?
They've been trained to be experts to say that.
Trained by the city, but education-wise, they're not engineers, they're not...
No, but they have enough expertise to say that wall may fail, go get an engineer to prove that it won't fail, or how you're going to fix it so it keeps from failing.
They would have that opportunity to go have somebody who is in the business.
Yep, yeah, we'll take an engineer's report saying that it's structurally sound to hold the load of the building, or it needs X, Y, and Z to be structurally sufficient to hold the load of the building.
Okay.
Yep. Again, we're going to have specific violations for electrical, plumbing, mechanical. Those are kind of contained in various paragraphs that you have to kind of pick out within that paragraph. It seems much easier to say the mechanical system needs to be repaired or replaced, and then put the reasoning for that determination. And again, Linda, to your point, if they want to hire an electrical contractor to go in and look at that system and say, "It's safe," we will absolutely take that statement from a contractor that is licensed in the state of Iowa.
And would you give them that opportunity before you file a lawsuit saying...
Absolutely. We would like them to come to us before we file a lawsuit. Minor amendments, again, the intergovernmental process has changed since the rollout. We were going to have landlords be able to go online and go into the self-service portal, put in their application, and do it themselves. We believe it's better for record maintenance for us to enter in the back office and not require them to go in, because if they make a mistake, then we're stuck with it, and we have to start the case all over again. It's just easier for our staff to do that. They are able to, though, pay invoices through the self-service portal, so that is up and running. So, it's just minor tweaks to say they don't have to go in and put their application in. We're going to do that for them. It just clarifies the process. Again, there's some clarifications within ordinance that we want to clear up, typographical errors, spelling errors, you know, just, just cleanup. You've had, we've had so many ordinance changes of this over the last 20 years that it's just, this is a good time to just do that cleanup and make it, make it correct. That is the essence of what we're doing with Chapter 60.
Go ahead, Carl.
Quick question on inspections for rental units. So, is there one group that, or one team that inspects the rental units, and is there another person or team that does the common areas? Just have a clarification.
No, there, there is, the inspector inspects the entire building.
Okay.
And if there's a rental in a building with, with multi-units, and maybe one or two are rentals, and the rest are owner-occupied, they do the common areas.
Okay, so it's not like another department, or it's not fire or something that does the common areas?
Fire does their own inspections for fire safety. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to speak to what they do. I know they look at the fire systems, they look at exits to make sure they're clear, you know, some of that stuff in common areas.
Okay.
That's a different inspection.
Okay, how often, do you have any idea how often those common areas are, or how often the fire department...
I believe those are annual inspections, but I'm, I don't do them.
Sure, I know it's not in your sandbox, but, okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Well, we'd be able to see Chapter 60 before it comes to us.
Yes, we are meeting with the legal department this, this week. We have our portion drafted. I've done the red line strikeouts, so it should be pretty easy. We want them to go through, make sure that there isn't anything they're concerned about. I'd like to get it to you before, a week or so before the next council meeting, so that you have a chance to read it.
That's, that's helpful, sometimes when I don't get them until...
Yeah, especially when we're changing the public nuisance violations, I do want you to take a look at it and see how we split it out to clarify.
Do you have a approximate timetable when that will be on our council agenda?
The first, the meeting in December.
First meeting in December, thank you.
Only in December.
Whatever that is, the 12th or something.
Right.
So, I wanted to ask about, specifically about, since we're making changes to the rental code, we've talked, at least internally, about the idea of adding a requirement for homes that have been identified as potentially having lead service lines, that as part of the rental certificate, there be a requirement to test. Can we get that in this, in this update?
Mr. Manager?
Not this update, but I've just started over the weekend that process with, with legal. That's a new topic that needs to be researched to make sure that, that we can go that far. So, there will be more of that conversation over the next several weeks to get that added in if the council still desires.
Is it strictly just for rental?
Well, I mean, that, that's what I'm looking at. I mean, I, I'm happy to have the broader conversation, but it seems to me that we have, going to the authority question, I think it seems very clear, because we have the ability to affect the health and safety, and lead in drinking water is certainly a very clear health and safety issue. And so, if we know a home is likely served by a lead service line, just a requirement to test, and if there is lead to fix the, the issue of lead in the service line, seems like a pretty minimal, minimal thing, and I would hope within our authority to address.
So, I was planning to bring that conversation back to the full council once I had a chance to give legal some time to confirm that.
Okay.
Can we involve Des Moines Water Works? Because I know they have programs right now where there are some households that are set up that they test the lead, test for lead in the water on a annual, or I, I don't know what their schedule is.
Yes.
But I think they should be involved as to, we go with what they tell us is acceptable.
Right, and we're going to need to work with them, because they maintain the database on the water pipes. They do not, they do not have a record of which homes have lead and which do not.
No.
And so, there are really three questions that we will be bringing back to council is, do we require testing of whether or not you have a lead pipe? And then, upon notice or recognition that you do have lead pipe, secondly, should testing occur of the tap water, which would make sense? And then, lastly, should there be a requirement to actually replace the lead pipe and get rid of it? So, those would be the policy discussions to have.
Right, and we can figure out pieces of this, because what Water Works has now, they've got, I mean, they, they have on their website that you can enter in your home, and they identify some 20,000 homes in Des Moines that potentially have lead service line.
Potentially, right.
And that's based on the year that those lines went in and the size of the lines, to their knowledge. So, they've got a pretty good idea that there's lead service lines. They don't have certainty, because some, right.
And what about the health department? Because I know the kids, before they enter school, kids are all tested for lead, so if there's, if they, if they test positive for lead, then, then we know that it could be the water lines, it could be the siding on the house. I mean, it could be lots of different things.
I mean, this is just another way to, to catch the issue. I mean, we know, for example, that lead service lines, I mean, it's a problem across the country, and we see what happens if the water changes, which Des Moines Water Works is very conscientious about, but if the pH level of the water changes, or you switch a water source, that's what can all of a sudden corrode a bunch of lead service lines. That's part of what happened, for example, in Flint, and why we're having a conversation about this, because we're now a bit more aware of the fact that an event can, can sort of trigger a massive problem. And so, increased awareness on property owners is part of what we can do to, to help address this before, before a triggering event.
All right, anybody have anything else? All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the odor control.
Okay, Mayor, members of council, Sue Ann Donovan again. We're going to talk about odor control. So, just a reminder of our current process. The process starts once city staff receives 10 calls to the hotline with the same descriptor within six hours, and then we go out and attempt to locate the source with sort of a sniff test. If the industry is identified, they're told they are, they are the point of origin. If there are three findings within a 90-day period, the company must present a mitigation plan. I will note that not in 20 years or more have we reached the level of a mitigation plan. So, it seems that our...
I would, I would just say, as representing the eastern part of our city and the East Village, this current process does not work. Just, and I'm glad that we're taking a look at it. I know Councilman Voss lives there and has a distinct smell of it consistently. But yeah, this is, this process doesn't work, so I'm glad you're bringing it forward.
Yeah, we acknowledge this process isn't working.
This process is definitely broken.
So, we need to figure out if we can come up with another solution. I will say this at the beginning. This is not an attempt to put businesses out of business.
Right, no.
It's not an attempt to shut industries down. This is not an attempt to move anybody that currently employs people within the city of Des Moines to move them out or relocate them. This is an attempt to find a balance between their right to do production and residents' right to an expectation that they're not going to be adversely affected by odors. So, I want to lead with that. I think that's important for everybody to understand, so they aren't going into this like, "Oh, the city wants to shut down whoever." That is not the goal.
Because most of those businesses have been here for many, many years.
Correct, and we've built up around them, and we've enhanced the East Village, and we've put more housing in, and we've moved MSC-1 and MSC-2 into their backyard. So, we need to learn to work together. So, one of the things that I want to clarify is that pollution is not smell. Those are two different things that are handled through two different control mechanisms. Air pollution refers to the release of pollutants into the air, which is detrimental to human health. So, those are the particles that are released that if you breathe in, you're going to get lung damage, and it's going to adversely affect your health. Odor, though, impacts through a strong, unpleasant, offensive smell that can interfere with one's enjoyment of life. Sitting out on a patio, having a supper, you know, can be adversely affected by odor. City staff is focused on dealing with the odor. Air pollutants are dealt with by Pope County in the state of Iowa. So, they're two different things, two different controls, two different, you know, concepts of control, and I just want to make sure that we're all staying focused on the pollution side. We're not going to get into, or the smell side, we're not going to get into the pollution side. That's somebody else's regulation.
And we don't control that. Pope County does that.
Yes.
But is, do they coincide together at all? Do we know?
They can, but our focus is going to be on smell.
That's, that's fine. It doesn't necessarily answer the question.
Well, maybe the consultant can answer it better. At the end, he's going to come up and answer scientific questions that I can't answer.
No, I understand.
So, we did have this conversation, we've had it several times, and council approved an odor study. We have a contract with RK and Associates, Inc., and they have been to the city to help us. They provided odor training to city staff, so there was a classroom portion on the science of odor, and then they broke into groups, and they actually had their smell tested to determine who had the most receptive nose and who didn't. So, they went through a series of sniffing bottles and then going through when the air, so you'd add parts of air and get it down to where they could smell zero. So, there was this whole quite elaborate, interesting testing. We've been trained to analyze complaint calls and weather conditions so that we can map odor, and odor monitoring was conducted and recommendations have been provided by the consultant. So, they looked at odor complaints for the last 10 years. We receive approximately 200 complaints a year. Most complaints are surrounding putrid, rotting smell, cooking, meat cooking, and sewage. So, we just, we found a need to concentrate on these odors. So, they looked at wind direction of the complaint and significant odor sources that trigger order complaints are located southeast, south, and east of the complainants, shown by this diagram for one of the years of study. Here is a mapping of the complaints. So, the blue bubbles with the stars in it are the identified odor generators. Those were staff's suggestion to the consultant that we believe these could be potential odor generators. The areas with the red balloons or dots are the areas where the concentrate, more concentrations of complaints were received. So, it kind of gives you an idea of the cluster of odor complaints when it's mapped with the potential odor sources. So, the consultant conducted two monitoring events, June 13th through 2022, through the 17th, August 8th through the August 12th. These monitoring events included 10 locations that the staff had identified, and the, somebody changed the slide, sorry. The consultant then measured the number of air dilutions to reach a level of no detection. For instance, a DT of less than two means there was a detectable odor in the ambient air, but after two sample dilutions, the odor was no longer detectable. So, that's sort of how the, the odor is described, is how many dilutions does it take to get to zero? If it takes four dilutions, it's a four. If it takes seven, it's seven. And so, that's, that's what, what the odor is detectable at. They also monitored at 16 community locations and around the businesses. They also monitored at 16 community locations and around the businesses.
Exactly what it should be?
A, a, a air, a, it's like a, a defined amount of air added to the smell to, to get it diluted down to where you couldn't smell it. So if it took, again, I'm not going to get scientific, you know? If it's, if I smell it and it takes seven of those, you know, other air, ambient air in there before I can no longer smell it, that's a seven. But I'm going to leave that to the expert to get into more detail.
Is, the DT means detectable test? Is that what? DT?
Detection to threshold.
Detection to threshold.
So threshold being zero, I think. Yes. This is science, more science than I've had in years. So out of 590 measurements of the perimeter locations, 65 had no odor, 22% had zero to two, 8% had two but less than four, and 5% had four but less than seven. So the consultant is suggesting that the threshold be set at four, for what we have as an acceptable level in the city of Des Moines. So anything above four, like a five, would need to have some method to bring that odor down to where it's at a four.
So anything-
So a seven would be-
Four or less, is that still, and maybe he can answer this, is that-
That would be acceptable.
Is it still, are we still going to smell?
Probably sometimes you will smell it. But it won't be a seven.
Well, I mean, but-
Or a nine.
I don't know what the difference between a four and a seven is, you know, and how long it, you know, I mean, that's-
Yeah.
Well, just-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I, I just-
I, I think if we go through this and then you can-
Okay, all right.
Save your questions because I'm going to be less than helpful. So who did they find to be significant odor generators? Darling, Heinrich Farms and Witchman Pig Company tested at seven around their, their industries when they were measured at the property line. So they were identified as significant odor generators, having reached a seven. The ones that they found to not be odor generators, Kamen, the soybean processing plant, Helena wastewater treatment, asphalt sealant, those were some of the other ones that we identified that could possibly be, and they did, they determined that they were staying well under the seven. So the recommendation, odor levels be set at four. At five or above, it's noncompliant at the property line. So again, say, this isn't for commercial restaurants. We, we got to kind of keep in a lane here, so. They would be required, if, if we find, which the three are going to find, the seven, submit an odor control implementation plan and odor management plan for review and then, you know, use the dilution threshold to look at their plans and make sure that they are using best practices to attempt to reach that. So they would be required on their own to determine the, their odor control points for sampling. They would be required to produce a dispersion model to determine the impacts downwind. So when, remember that map where they go, they're going to have to figure out how they're going to control that dispersion at the plant so it doesn't get to where the complaints are received. And then identify odor control measures necessary to comply with the nuisance regulations that we set. And then we would have to, once they submit them, we're going to have to hire an odor control consultant to make sure that the plans are going to reach the levels that we set because nobody on staff has that expertise. Yeah, again, address the plant's maintenance activities as they go along and identify the steps to be taken to make sure that vertive odors from its operations are contained or minimized. Next steps, we're going to meet with the three identified significant odor generators and discuss, you know, sort of what voluntary compliance is going to look like, how, how we can all work together to get there. We will draft an ordinance for the council's consideration if we feel like we need to do that after the voluntary compliance discussions. I think we're going to have to hold public meetings to get feedback from stakeholders, bring the ordinance back to council in the spring of 2023 for discussion, and then implement the ordinance as needed to reach compliance. It would be much better for everybody if we could do voluntary compliance and, and work through this with the industries and staff is more than willing to do that.
If I could, Scott? One other thing we had talked about, and I don't know if we can ask the consultant if this makes sense, is since we don't know as laypeople what the difference between a five and a seven might smell like, that when we have instances where we've measured it as such, we would send out a quick notice to say, for your familiarity, this is a six. And so those in the area would have a feel for what that means and how bad or not so bad it actually does smell and have a few, a few opportunities for, for the public and yourselves to understand the differences.
Yeah, I think if we can set up sort of our own odor sensing machines at certain times and certain points, that we can figure out what, pretty close to what it is and then maybe put out an alert to the community, what you're smelling today is a six, what you're smelling today is a seven.
Linda?
I, a few years ago, it's been quite a few years ago. I know Josh and I, and I think you were there, we went through one of the plants. And I think it'd be nice if we could do that again, just to bring it back to us if anybody wants to.
I'm going to pass this time.
You're going to pass. But when we met, I mean, I remember the, whoever we talked to, they were, they said, if there's ever an issue, just give us a call.
Yep.
You know, when the trucks come in, they open the doors and so that, that is what causes the odor. I mean, I'm just saying what they said.
And we've reached out and had a conversation with them.
And they said, you know, if there's ever a problem, you guys, you can just reach out directly to us.
Yep.
I wonder, has, have we-
We have spoken with them, yes.
So, Mayor, real quick, Councilman Voss and I have met with members of Darling, I think you have too. I mean, they, they, they tell us that they're using best practices? I mean, I don't know what, I don't, I don't know, can the consultant, have we looked at what practices they're using to-
The last time we really looked at it was 20 years ago when they, because it was National Buy Products and they're the ones that went through the compliance plan with us back then. And they did reach best practices then. Now what's happened in the 20 years, it's anybody's guess. They've been real receptive to talking to us.
Yeah.
So I don't, I think that their goal is, I'm speaking for them and I probably shouldn't, but when I talk to them, their goal seems to be in line with ours, you know? Where we want to work together, we're not shutting you down. We just want to figure out a way to coexist within the community.
Well, those are the answers that we have gotten. And Carl, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we've, we've had multiple conversations with them and-
So it might be them bringing us their, you know, whatever they're doing now and having someone look at it and say, yeah, they're using best practices and, or can they get it lower than they are by implementing something else?
Well, and best practices has often two components, right? I mean, you, it, it's not just about getting the practice in place, it's about maintaining the practice and doing everything to maintain it. So you can start on one side and maybe be off. And, and I don't-
Sure.
Again, this is not, this requires the technical folks to engage, but simply saying we're doing best practices, there are a lot of times people say, we're doing best practices and they are a long way off from what is the best practice and how that's supposed to be implemented.
Well, and technologies have changed too, so.
So is the consultant the one that's going to work with the, the businesses to figure out if it is? Because, I mean, I don't think there's anybody on staff that knows whether it is or it isn't.
Moving forward, we'll have to bring suggestions to council as to how we're going to have that, those plans analyzed and who, and it might be another RFP to say, you know, this was the study.
Okay.
An RFP for who do we want to be the person who looks at the plans and comes back to us with the answers in language that I can understand, that, that we can work with.
And there's no one at the state that does any of this? I mean, they analyze the, the air that we're breathing, I mean, so there's no-
Iowa State has a, Iowa State has a component. I know back when National Buy Products did it, we went to some, a company in St. Croix and Iowa State and they worked hand in hand. Now, I don't know today what Iowa State, you know, they changed even their curriculum and, and what they're teaching and how they're teaching it. So I don't know if they're a partner that's still available, but there are, there are partners out there that we can find to help us with this.
Connie?
I was just going to say something about the pollutants too. I know we're doing odor, but are we doing a pollutant study around these facilities also?
We are not doing a pollutant study.
Have we asked the people that do it to do it?
I have not because we don't regulate pollutants.
I was just wondering, does he, the-
I mean, we can reach out to the DNR and see if they have some statistics.
Just so we could see both together. And also what if at some point, because that smell has been around for a long time, that there is just nothing you can do?
There might be, that might actually be what happens.
Okay.
And I think that if, if that happens, we've gone through all of the steps we can do to try to mitigate the odor. And I think then we, we can feel good about, you know, not feel good about it, but at least we can have a, a scientific answer for the community. You know, that this is what it is, or we can bring it down to this level.
We can also add explanations as to weather events and then maybe even the, the three locations might be able to provide better information on timing of when this is likely to occur. So at least some people, I don't want to say expect it, but at least know why it's occurring.
Carl?
So does city staff have or will they have one or more of the centimeters?
I will anticipate that we will ask council for approval to buy a couple centimeters.
And what, what's the approximate cost on that? Okay.
So $5,000 and buy us two.
Okay. And so like there are mornings when I step out the door at six to run and it knocks me back, the smell. So could I report that smell at 6:00 AM and will someone from inspections go out and, and, I mean, are they on call for the?
Those are staffing issues will work out.
Okay.
Because I think is, it is going to be important when you step out at six, that's the point in time we need to know what the range is. And within an hour, it can be gone.
The other question that follows up with that, if Carl calls at six, how many more calls do you need before somebody responds?
I think that this ordinance would respond somewhat differently. If we're trying to set up a, an information piece for residents, that we would go out, we would measure it and we would put out on social media, this is registered at a nine, so everybody knows what a nine is, and then use that information to continue to work with the industries. What, what happened at six o'clock in the morning on August 2nd that caused a nine? Was it the weather? Was it a door open where they were unloading? What, you know, what can we look at for that particular incident that gives us more information about what's happening?
And, you know, on most years, August is-
Yes.
Pretty putrid, but it wasn't this year. Like I stepped out the door, well, within the last two weeks and kind of like, November? What the heck is this about? So, so, so are we getting enough of a sample of what has been bad in the past? I mean, just quirky this year, there wasn't, I think, is kind of like a plug sits over the southeast side and-
Sure, it's a weather inversion.
It didn't happen that, yeah. I don't know if that's a weather inversion or, you know, whatever, but, so that just didn't happen this year when the consultant was in town in August, it wasn't terrible. So.
Yep.
So just to give us an idea of what other communities have used as their DT threshold, like in the Chicago area, what's the threshold there and what would be a threshold number in California?
Well, California is about two.
Two?
So, and Kentucky can be, is about seven. So it's, it's different across the nation.
What, what, what people will tolerate?
Yep. And what the, yeah, what people will tolerate and, and what the governance of the whatever is willing to tolerate.
Okay, so amongst your inspectors, and I know everyone went through the testing in whenever that was, March or so, who's on your nose team?
I don't have that with me right now, but there is, there is an A list.
Okay.
There's an A and a B list.
Yes, there is.
So, so like, will they have the centimeter in their car and ready to roll?
Uh, we will have to work out who's assigned the centimeter and who will be assigned to go out when there is a weather event or an event that happens and records that.
So, and if an individual who, who lives in the East Village wanted to buy their own centimeter, could they?
I think a citizen could probably buy their own centimeter.
A citizen might do that.
It's like, I could, I can imagine a citizen might.
Okay. By the way, I'm pleased to, pleased to hear you've had some, some meetings with Darling and Pat Becker, right? So that's, that's a good sign that there's a willingness to work.
And just to be clear, we're meeting with the other two this afternoon, this, this morning and this afternoon. We want to have the same open dialogue with those industries also, so they-
This will be the first time we met with the other two?
We've talked to them, this will be the first in-person meeting. Darling requested a virtual phone call, so we talked to them briefly last week, but-
Right, okay.
We wanted to make sure that they knew this was happening before we rolled it out to you, that they aren't surprised and, and make sure they understand that we're trying to work on this together. It's not, I don't want it to be adversary. I want it to be cooperative as much as, as we can. Because again, we're not here to put anybody up. You know, that's not the goal.
So a four is, would that be comparable to the Chicago area or a community?
Four is about, Chicago area is- Can you come up? Just to give you an idea of what kind-
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure. Suresh Sharanani from RK and Associates, I am the principal of the firm.
Thank you.
The, just to give you an idea of what the landscape looks like for odor regulation, there are several approaches. The most common use in United States, among all states and cities, is a nuisance law. That means if you believe, if any citizen believes that they are subjected to nuisance because of the, you know, they can enjoy their property, they have a right to sue. Okay? Been involved in those lawsuits, they range from $10 million to $50 million. Compared to environmental violations, nuisance lawsuits are very, very expensive because it becomes a class action lawsuit. So there are 40 people get together and they file a lawsuit. It is a very expensive process for the industry to defend themselves, which most of the time I'm generally working for the industry. It is very expensive of me. And most of the time, those trials go in a jury. So there is always a jury perception that, you know, industry and citizens. So generally you have a negative issue associated with the industry. So generally, when we defend industry against the nuisance lawsuits, we say that show me the debt, that why we are not causing the nuisance. Once you have those debts, judge will say they have done reasonable thing. They have a right to exist and the decision is made by jury based on what the, that is the common nuisance law. Nuisance law is there, whether you come up with this regulation or not, the nuisance law is still prevailing. I'm not a lawyer by any means, but I'm just telling you that that is generally there. And the city can also join the lawsuit on behalf of the citizen to pursue. So that's the most common one. Then there are dilution to threshold value is used as a reasonable approach. If you, and the, and the idea is to define that any odor detection, say you are out there in the community and you smell odors, any detection of odors is not a nuisance. Because if you say, or if the city says that if, if I citizen smells something and it's a nuisance, you will not have any McDonald's in Des Moines. So the nuisance has to be higher than a detection. Because otherwise, people will say, you know, any kind of, you know, you are living in a town, and generally, it's a dilution to threshold has been used by a lot of states. And states, if you see most of the states, they will generally fall under seven, seven or above. Then there are some states which say four and above is a nuisance, okay? Now, those are states. States generally have a little bit more lenient because the plant could be located in a remote part of the town, or no, of the state, there are no neighbors. So generally, the state regulations are a little bit more general because if you say anything over four is a nuisance, you know, and there is no community nearby, what's the point, right? So they are a little bit more. Now, cities generally are a little bit more restrictive because the population is closer. You know, there is no buffer between the source and that. But you have to have a reasonableness. So in here, there was a question of what two means and what a four means. If I tell you that the odors are two means, if I come to your, for your property, your house, and I collect a one cubic feet of sample from your ambient outside your house, if I dilute that cubic feet of air with two cubic feet of odor free air, so it becomes a three cubic, right? If I smell it, it's two. If I don't smell it, it's less than, is it? So what we are saying in here is that the putrid odors, now, I totally agree with you, this August wasn't that bad compared to the results we have seen, okay? Because I was expecting higher than seven, we didn't see. So I think that's why we are saying that if you want to improve the situation, because 200 complaints are a lot of complaints in a given. And city also has a desire to come up with a regulation. And on top of it, I believe that the industry should be receptive to this because it takes the risk of nuisance lawsuits available. So if there is a nuisance lawsuit against the source, source says, you know what? City has a regulations and we comply with that. It is a very good defense. So if I was this industry, I would definitely listen to it.
Well, I think during the training that you did with the staff, and I sat in on a good portion of the day, I think you said it had been 10 years since you had dealt with a city that had a rendering plant issue.
Yes, yes. Rendering plants generally, we don't see that close to the big city metropolitan areas.
Right.
The instrument which has been established since 1970, ASTM, it was developed at IIT Research Institute where, you know, I was employed. And Dr. Dravenax, who developed the instrument, was funded by Rendering Institute. Now, you know, since I worked for Dr. Dravenax, he has passed away, God bless his soul. But, so Rendering Institute was the first one has been concerned about the orders because that was the main one in issue. Nowadays, we see more associated with the landfills, you know, landfills are a larger source of orders. Been involved in three cases where the landfill has been sued by the citizens. There are regulations like in Michigan, if you go to Michigan. Michigan has a regulation which says that you're gonna rank the orders from one to six. Inspector will go there and the inspector will decide what is the intensity of order. If inspector says that it is greater than three, you are in violation of the 901 rule of Michigan. You get a ticket. They'll fine you a hundred dollars or something of that sort, pretty minimal. And what they tell you is that you tell us what caused the orders and how you plan to implement a control. So the objective in here is that you are not trying to shut them down. You want them to have a record saying that you had this ticket on, say, 2000, July 5th of 2022, you came up with this plan, and subsequent to that, you had another odor incident, complaints, another odor incidents, you're keeping a track, right? So that you have to say that you have to act, like I heard, you know, alderman, you said that everybody says, if I go talk to them, oh, mine is a state of the art, I'm doing everything I can. How do you know? You verify, right? So if you see a complaint, you go and measure the orders, inspector. And what we are saying is, we're gonna measure at the perimeter. We did not go inside the plant because we have no right to go inside the plant, and city told us not to do that. So at the perimeter, if you find five or above, you send them some kind of a violation, you know, whatever the council, you know, or mayor, what you think is appropriate. And then they have to respond back to you saying that, so they request a meeting with the city within 30 days. And that, and the city, you know, what happened, was it the incident happened, or you had some leak or something like that? But if there is barring any incident, if the orders are there because of the summer months, you come up with a plan. So what you do is, you do a odor study, you do a basically measure orders, like we measured in community. What the industry has to do is, they take a sample of the exhaust air coming out of their operation, and they measure their dilution to threshold value. We are not asking them to measure any pollutants because that is a violation of, you know, state rules, and they are very reluctant to do so. So you ask them to measure orders coming out of the stack, and then you plug in the dispersion model. It's a US EPA dispersion models. They predict using a five-year of meteorological data every 10 minutes. So meteorological data, wind data are available by the nearest, you know, weather station. And based on that emission from the source, using the meteorological data, you can estimate what would be the worst case concentration in the community. So now you know. One of the question is that, you know, this year it wasn't that bad. But when I do that, that model will be done for five years. So in five years, this would be the worst case. So you say, okay, now, you know, this is the worst case. How are you gonna come up with something so we do not exceed five in your community? When I say five, I mean five at the fence line of the plant, very near, you know, right at the And based on the studies people have performed, generally, you have that standard, you will see dramatic reduction in your odor.
No. And so, um, well, our code have some sort of violation schedule that will be escalating then for like, the first violation is X dollars and subsequent? Well, let me ask it a different way. Is that what other cities have done?
No, the, what they do is every violation, they get a ticket. They have to pay X number of dollars, which is not very serious, you know, very, you know, serious fine is probably a hundred, $200. But the thing in here is that once you pay that fine, you are accepting that there wasn't open nuisance.
Gotcha.
So there is a legal basis. And simultaneously, why should industry do that? The regulation has a two-prong, right? It protects the citizens because the city chooses to do so, but it also protects the industry. It shields them from nuisance law. So if citizens file a nuisance law, and the industry can claim that we were complying with the city. There is ordinance, it's a reasonable. As a matter of fact, in March of 2021, last year, one of our clients, Zion Landfill, up in Illinois, was sued by 40 citizens that they were there and they can enjoy their property, and they filed a lawsuit for $10 million. Our client offered them a million dollars to go away, you know? And citizen's lawyer said, no, he wants 10. So he went to trial. And I was the expert witness on the, you know, the, the industry side. And our position was that in Illinois, it says anything less than seven is not a nuisance, anything over seven is a nuisance. And under, when we measured orders for like a it was, it was a complex plant, but we came up with a measurement plan and we had measured it, and under no conditions, we exceeded seven. So we presented that to the jury because it was a jury trial, and jury agreed with us. And jury didn't award any money to the citizen. So the, the reason I say that is that there is also for the role for the industry to participate in it because it protects them.
Well, I personally don't think that a city trying to be world-class should, should have a, a putrid smell about it, so.
That's
I'm glad we're making some progress on this. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna ask, I mean, the best management practice piece. You mentioned that there are some places that have, uh, that have a threshold of two DT.
Right.
And there, there are best management practices that can allow entities to meet that two DT.
They do, and the thing, when I say that, say for an example here, you say that, say, we went, if the city adopts, adopts this rule and says that, you know, anything over five is a nuisance, and say, rendering plant had greater than five, you send them a ticket, they came to the city. They will, what the city will require them to do is perform an odor study and do a modeling to show that currently, based on this, what is the worst case concentrations of orders at the fence line they envision, okay? And say that comes out to be eight, okay? Then they say, okay, if I control this source, if I control this source, if I control this source, and I control like, say, 20% here, 10% there, 10% here, by controlling that, and I do the model again, it will come out to four, and city will say, go right ahead, do so. The thing in here is that you want them, industry, to tell them that how they want to come with the compliance, rather than you dictating them that what is the state of the art. Because state of the art varies from industry to industry, right? So rendering will have a X state of the art, fork handling facility may have different. I think some of these facilities, what they may be doing is when they are cleaning it, they're not paying attention to it. Just clean it with, with this thing in your mind.
Door when you're cleaning and
That's right. So contain it. It is not that bad. It is the, if you are not aware of it, you are causing it. And a city like Des Moines should not have putrid kind of a smell when you drive through the town, right? Now, there is a point here, the alderman brought up, saying that they were here first, okay? We have seen that defense. It's called a coming to nuisance defense. That means we were there, we were causing nuisance, and you came to us. Why are you blaming us? The, lot of judges throw that defense out. Now, once again, I'm not a lawyer, but I've seen that, that defense, coming to nuisance defense, what we call it, it's hard to win a lot of times. Now, some of the agriculture facilities, if you are handling, um, like you have a pen, you know, or when you are growing it, I think some of the, I think the state may be exempting them from those requirements, state of Illinois, Iowa. But generally, unless you have a specific regulation which exempts you from coming to nuisance defense, it's hard to, it's hard to using that defense in the courts, I have seen, that my, up to my Pardon me?
It's been around for many years.
Yes, yes.
Was nothing new, it's just we have more people smelling it.
Yes. So that's the decision the, you know, the council that's took in.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you. All right, Ms. Manager, anything else?
Nothing else.
This morning? Okay. All right, we, and then we have our regular council meeting. Do we have anything on it? One proclamation? Okay. All right, we've got a closed session at three o'clock. And for those members of the public, thank you for attending this morning, and we will see you for a proclamation, and we'll get going. Regular city council meeting. Thanks. This meeting is adjourned.